I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you see that? We are going to deviate real quick before we call the meeting order. Keith is gonna come up and talk to us a little bit about the St. Robert Speedway, is that the...
Fortland Speedway.
Fortwood Speedway.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone, I'm Keith Pritchard. Just a few days ago, Leela Randolph of St. Robert, formerly of St. Robert, passed away. She and her husband Charlie Randolph ran, operated the Fortland and Wood Speedway on Missouri Avenue out here in the 60s, about '64 to '69. They also operated Charlia Speedway in Lebanon, and then for one year, the Springfield Fairgrounds Speedway. And I just wanted to take a couple minutes and thank you, Todd, for the opportunity just to honor the Randolphs' family and their contribution to the growth of St. Robert. So picture Charlie and Leela here back in the early 60s, when they ran the track, they were just young kids really then. Actually, Leela Randolph hired me when I was nine years old to go to work at the Fortwood Speedway in 1964. I sold cokes and hamburgers in the stands. And after a couple, after the first year, I got promoted to the pits. I was the concession boy in the pits. Best job on earth. I would still like to do it today, because I was down there with the race car, and the men, and the, all the action, it was so much fun. But really, the Fortwood Speedway here in St. Robert had an impact on NASCAR nationally, and I'd just like to touch base a couple things. One of the racers was a racer, and this is a picture from Fortwood Speedway right here, was Ed Nagree from the Springfield area, if you can Google his name. He raced here, and was very successful, and he wanted to get bigger in NASCAR as it was starting, so he moved to the Carolinas and started, he took his car out there and signed it up for a track, and he was trying to find a driver. There was a new young kid that didn't have a car, his name was Dale Earnhardt.
No way.
Dale Earnhardt drove his first race in a stock car that Ed Nagree owned that raced here at Fortwood Speedway. Google it, it's fact. This is another racer that was out there, this is Russ Wallace from Rollup. Russ Wallace has three boys, Rusty Wallace, Kenny Wallace, and Michael Wallace, all which made themselves famous nationally in the NASCAR world, and still are today. This is Russ at Fortwood Speedway. There's a picture of Russ, his wife, and Michael, the youngest son, at Fortwood Speedway winning a trophy. So this is, you know, these things all happened right here in our town. And then we also had Larry Phillips. If you're a NASCAR fan, Larry Phillips is a, has been on the NASCAR Hall of Fame ballot for the last couple of cycles. He'll probably be elected one of these days, he raced here quite often, was quite a colorful guy, and anybody that got around him, he wrecked them. That's kinda how he won. But I didn't want it to go by without acknowledging the Randolphs' contribution to our town, to NASCAR tracks. And we have four binders over here that have a little over 400 pictures from Fortwood Speedway and the Rollup Speedway that came from Mrs. Randolph's estate. Her daughters gave them to us so that we could distribute them to the families that raced here locally. People like Larry Lurcher Business Graphics, Maurice Vaughn, Mike Sendler from St. Robert, Dale McMurtry, Dale Duncan, just on and on and on, lots of local people that are still here, raced there, and, you know, it was a lot of fun.
Well, she also worked at the school district.
She worked at the school district, worked at the senior center for several years in her retirement, and then finally moved to Springfield to be close to their youngest daughter, and that's where she passed away, but was buried here this past weekend. Great contribution, that's all I wanted, was to acknowledge them.
Just a quick question, I was just wondering, I mean, you know, that's a lot of history, is there any way that we could do some of the display in the museum?
Absolutely, you can have, this is welcome to anyone, the city certainly, and any one of the families, I think the city has some of that already, and we certainly, it's available to them, that's why we captured it.
Well, Todd, I'd like to thank Keith and Mr. Wallace and the Channel 12 kids. I had Keith come in early today, he came in at 3:30. Mr. Wallace and the kids did a video for our museum, and also Keith is gonna get us a disc with the pictures on them, so we can have our own book made to put in the museum.
Yeah, I think that'd be cool.
It's really neat, it's great history, and the racetrack is still out there behind, back in behind Bluegrass Ready Mix, there's a Blacktop Oval out there, about three-eighths of a mile in the woods out there, and so it still lives, it's just not active anymore. But, great history, more history of St. Robert, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right. I said, wouldn't it be nice if we could, if we could make it a walking train, and keep it alive?
It's pretty bad shape.
It's in pretty bad shape.
It's a real bad shape.
And some private grounds. All right, we got, I am filling in for the mayor for a night, in case you guys haven't figured it out, he's at home recovering, so I'm pinch hitting, you know, you've heard it, going to the bottom of the barrel, we'll dig past that, turn the barrel over and keep digging, and there I am, so I'll be filling in. We do have a quorum tonight, we got three items on the consent agenda, Treasury report, approval of minutes, and improvement payment of bills. Linda, you wanna...
Yep. On October 1st, 2019, Treasury's report payable checks in the amount of $114,262.76. There are seven major vendor checks, 83% of the above-mentioned payable checks, and they come to $95,271.08. We have payroll for September 20th, 2019, to include Social Security and Medicare, $143,923.11. We have five monthly bond payments, they total $63,558.19. Grand total payable checks, payroll, and bond payments, $321,744.06.
All right, move that, we get a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Michael, second by Walter, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
All right. New business, item 5.1, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, first supplemental agreement to the airport and agreement, or Airport 8 agreement. What is this, this is extending the year, go ahead, Anita.
This extends the contract a year from June 30, 2019, to June 30, 2020. It also adds an additional $434,251 to the contract for the passenger terminal improvements.
All right. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
First reading, please.
Bill number 19109, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for supplemental agreement to Airport 8 agreement, project number 186-B-057-B-2.
All right, do I have a motion on the first reading?
Motion.
Motion by Linda, second by Reggie, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19109, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for supplemental agreement to Airport 8 agreement, project number 186057-B-2.
All right, do I have a motion on the second reading? By Teresa, second by Reggie, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Andrew is in ordinance.
Ordinance number 3436, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for supplemental agreement, Airport agreement, project number 186057-B.
Motion on the ordinance, motion by Michael, second by Walter, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19110, an ordinance accepting and approving Donald Magi's Incorporated Proposal for Sidewalk Improvement along East Lawn Avenue.
Where is that gonna be?
To have the exact...
Steve, do you know?
Steve, no.
Because I know we just did a little strip up here, where's the rest, where's this gonna be?
This continues that on...
Or down to the...
Through the Marshall intersection, and then connects at the stoplight.
Oh, okay.
So it's connecting to the one on the floor.
Well, yeah, except for a driveway. Or, did I write that driveway for...
It went across, we've already, we extended our part, and then this is on MoDOT right away, so...
On the left side.
Yeah, so it would be the second driveway to the, by the Casey's.
Right, okay.
Got it.
Anything else? Reasoning ordinance, please.
Bill number 19110, ordinance accepting and approving Donald Magi Incorporated's Proposal for Sidewalk Improvements along East Lawn Avenue.
I did forget to ask if there was any clarification or discussion on that, but I'm pinch hitting. And a motion on the second reading, Michael and Walter, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
All right, 3.3, reasoning ordinance, thank you, Tyce, please, thank you.
Even I can count to three. Order number 3437, ordinance accepting and approving Donald Magi Incorporated's Proposal for Sidewalk Improvements along East Lawn Avenue.
Motion on the ordinance, motion by Teresa, second by Reggie, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Sometimes like the Cardinals, I have trouble with crooked numbers, but, you know. All right, 3.3. Anita, this is one, you wanna explain this one?
This is taking out the city clerk in three places in the ATV ordinance, and leaving in the chief of police. I talked to Curtis about it yesterday, he was okay with the changes, it was actually caught by the company that does our ordinances, so they emailed Edna and then sent it off for the change.
We've already had this one, we're just cleaning it up.
We're just cleaning it up, taking out, it said, "Chief of Police slash," and then it had "City Clerk," and so the city clerk needed to come out of it.
All right, any questions? First reading, please.
Bill number 19111, I need a breath for this one. An ordinance repealing ordinance number 3339, and an ordinance restricting the operation of all-terrain vehicles within city limits, establishing special use permits for the limited operation of all-terrain vehicles within city limits, setting policies for the issuance of all-terrain vehicles, special use permits, and for the collection of permit fees, and establishing a penalty for failure to comply with special use permit requirements.
See, if you would've recorded that, we could use that for the second, third reading. You have a motion on the first reading. John makes a motion, second by Reggie, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
I didn't understand that second word.
Yes. Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19111, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 3339, and an ordinance restricting the operation of all-terrain vehicles within city limits, establishing special use permits for the limited operation of all-terrain vehicles within city limits, setting policies for the issuance of all-terrain vehicle special use permits, and for the collection of permit fees, and establishing a penalty for failure to comply with special use permit requirements.
Breathe. Motion on the second reading. Motion by Teresa, second by Reggie. Call the roll please. You gotta help right next to ya.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
And since you called me the last time, I'm not forgetting a third reading. Reading is an ordinance.
Order number 3738, same... An ordinance repealing ordinance number 3339, and an ordinance restricting the operation of all-terrain vehicles within city limits, establishing special use permits for the limited operation of all-terrain vehicles within city limits, setting policies for the issuance of all-terrain vehicle special use permits for the collection of permit fees, and establishing a penalty for failure to comply with special use permit requirements.
Motion on the ordinance, motion by Walter, second by Reggie, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19111, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 3339, and an ordinance restricting the operation of all-terrain vehicles within city limits, establishing special use permits for the limited operation of all-terrain vehicles within city limits, setting policies for the issuance of all-terrain vehicle special use permits, and for the collection of permit fees, and establishing a penalty for failure to comply with special use permit requirements.
Breathe. Motion on the second reading. Motion by Teresa, second by Reggie, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
And since you called me the last time, I'm not forgetting a third reading. Reading is an ordinance.
Order number 3738, same... An ordinance repealing ordinance number 3339, and an ordinance restricting the operation of all-terrain vehicles within city limits, establishing special use permits for the limited operation of all-terrain vehicles within city limits, setting policies for the issuance of all-terrain vehicle special use permits, and for the collection of permit fees, and establishing a penalty for failure to comply with special use permit requirements.
Motion on the ordinance, motion by Walter, second by Reggie, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Andrew is in ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3439, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Fidelity Communications for Internet Service.
Motion on the second reading, by Teresa, and second by Linda, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
And since you called me the last time, I'm not forgetting a third reading. Reading is an ordinance.
Order number 3738, same... An ordinance repealing ordinance number 3339, and an ordinance restricting the operation of all-terrain vehicles within city limits, establishing special use permits for the limited operation of all-terrain vehicles within city limits, setting policies for the issuance of all-terrain vehicle special use permits for the collection of permit fees, and establishing a penalty for failure to comply with special use permit requirements.
Motion on the ordinance, motion by Walter, second by Reggie, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Hey, the rest of them are shorter. All right, 3.4, fidelity communications.
This, we currently have 20 megabytes per second, and this raises it to 200 up and 200 down, Bob said, which makes us 10 times faster for the same money we got for 20.
Could be as much as 10 times.
Yeah, that's funny.
That's that up and down thing.
It's crazy that we're getting that much better for same amount of money, but good deal.
Right now, there's a big push on getting, they've got subsidies for internet providers, the little ones, or like we have Fidelity, which isn't little, but I was at MPUA last week, and they had a big conference over this, and I believe that's why we're getting more for less.
Good.
More for the same.
Good. Any other questions? First reading, please, sir.
Bill number 19112, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Fidelity Communications for Internet Service.
Motion on the first reading, Walter, second by Michael, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number 19112, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Fidelity Communications for Internet Service.
Motion on the second reading, by Teresa, and second by Linda, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
And since you called me the last time, I'm not forgetting a third reading. Reading is an ordinance.
Order number 3738, same... An ordinance repealing ordinance number 3339, and an ordinance restricting the operation of all-terrain vehicles within city limits, establishing special use permits for the limited operation of all-terrain vehicles within city limits, setting policies for the issuance of all-terrain vehicle special use permits, and for the collection of permit fees, and establishing a penalty for failure to comply with special use permit requirements.
Breathe. Motion on the second reading. Motion by Teresa, second by Reggie, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
All right, agenda 3.6.
I'm a little irritated, you're right before this ordinance comes.
3.6.
I should've mouth-balled though. We could've taken care of it.
All right, ordinance increasing the monthly retainer of the interim city councilor. Any questions or discussion on this?
Long debate.
Long debate? You already said money well spent. All right, first reading, please.
Bill number 19113, an ordinance increasing the monthly retainer for the interim city councilor.
See, this is the one that we should've had the really, really long time. You should've come up with something really, really creative.
Like a whole page.
Can I get the motion, the mayor makes a motion on the first reading, second?
Second.
Second by Reggie, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yeah.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 19113, an ordinance increasing the monthly retainer of the interim city councilor.
A motion on the second reading. Motion by Teresa, second by Reggie, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Any, America's Got Talent fans in here? Heck yeah! That guy on America's Got Talent, he got really, he said, "Heck yeah!"
Reggie?
I don't know how to follow that one.
Just go simple.
Yes.
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Glad you all have a lot of fun.
Reasoning ordinance, please. We're supposed to have fun.
Order number 3440, ordinance increasing the monthly retainer of the interim city councilor.
Motion on the ordinance.
Motion.
Motion by Michael, second by Walter, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
And it's part of your job to entertain us, yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
All right, um, committee meetings, wage and finance.
Wage and finance?
Oh, did I skip something?
Yes.
Oh, oh, I did. Oh, it's not, it's not in here.
It's not in there, I didn't see it either.
Um, I, I've got it, though, three point seven, um, we've got, uh, two members that we're gonna point to the, uh, park committee, uh, Reggie Blash and Brian Scott, and they're members of the Kansas City Barbecue Committee.
Our little barbecue committee that we're, uh, on the back and members in that.
They've, they've expressed some interest to, to be part of that, so if there's no objections.
Hopefully, they will be a very good influence for us.
We will go ahead and appoint them to the, uh, to the park committee. Yeah. All right, okay, so I got that, I forgot that one, Anita. Okay, now, committee meetings in schedule, correct? Did I miss anything, Ty's? Good. Wage and finance.
Wage and finance. Ms. Edna? Um, do we need sometime in, not this month, but sometime in November for the budget process?
And all the renewals of insurances and...
We haven't got anything, and we don't know what that's gonna be, not be prepared yet, but of course, the budget. Next month, yes. Okay.
Public Works, Steve, you need? No, nothing? Okay. Uh, Mercy Services, Chiefs aren't here, do they have anything, Anita, that you're aware of?
No, he didn't tell me anything.
Park Committee, Linda?
Uh, we're having a meeting tomorrow morning, but it's just for Christmas holiday in the park things at the pool.
Nine-thirty in the regular meeting, it'd be, uh, no...
Nine-thirty tomorrow morning.
Yeah, the first, when is it, Edna, the first month of October?
Yeah, and then the next meeting's the first number of member, Monday in October.
Yeah, it's seven.
All right, we don't have anything for Taxi or St. Robert IDA, um, comments by Alderman. I'll start with John, cause I don't know where the mayor left off last time.
That's...
I was gonna say wordy for last, cause Teresa usually has something, so she's thinking about it.
I will.
Michael? Walter?
Nothing.
Reggie?
Great meeting, Todd.
Really? Do you like it?
I like it.
Just keep it rolling, that's what I like.
Don't tell the mayor, he's probably watching, he's probably dripping his teeth right now saying, man, that guy don't know what he's doing.
I have a question for Steve, but I can wait until he comes up to give us his information, but, uh, the, quite, the film crew that's here, any of you guys watch the Waynesville football games, they do such an awesome job on that, oh my gosh, they compare to major broadcasts, I think, they do such a good job, you guys are good.
Congrats.
You wanna introduce your crew?
Yeah, great time.
Does anybody wanna be on TV, any of you guys wanna be instead of behind and in front?
Has that address for ya?
For putting on, nobody?
So, I've got, uh, Jason, he's one of my seniors from Plato, Alvin, he's one of my juniors from Waynesville, Trevor, senior from Waynesville, and Alana's a senior from Lakeway.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, Susan? Teresa?
Nothing.
Come on.
I'm gonna just be nice.
All right. All right, comments by...
Teresa was nice, right.
Administration, city clerk, and finance.
Just a couple of updates, um, since we were talking about budgets, um, I did, uh, distribute the budget worksheets to the, um, department heads so they can get started, but twenty-twenty, I cannot believe it's twenty-twenty.
Yeah, this year's smoked by.
The budget process, um, just wanna give you an update on e-bills for our utility customers, we have about forty-three percent of the customers receive their bills by email.
Yay!
And that was after a big push, um, by Mr. Johansson wanting to let our customers know that we do have that options to receive their bills. Also, um, this month's, um, disconnect date for non-payment will be on October the eighth, and the balance in the operating account after tonight's payment of the bills.
Wait a minute, you guys need to make sure you get her so the mayor can hear this.
After payment of the bills, the payroll and the monthly bond payments is two-point-four million. Woo!
Is that to the nickel, is that, cause the mayor will call you?
Two million, four-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Yeah, just wanna make sure.
Yay!
Thank you.
That's like two-hundred thousand more.
All right, Spire Chief, Police Chief gone, Steve?
It'll go back up.
Now, remember, Linda's got a question for ya.
I'll make it quick. Electric Department has been installing, uh, lines, the underground primary lines at the Patriot Plaza site, and also in the, uh, Country Club Development area, um, the natural gas, uh, main is also being installed at the, the Patriot Plaza site, and it should be completed, uh, by the first part of next week, so they'll have natural gas on that side. Uh, the water project on the, uh, Missouri Avenue is, uh, it's going very well, the contractor is, uh, pretty much has everything installed, and as far as the main goes, they're going through the disinfection process right now, and they are, uh, installing some gabion baskets and, um, that sort of stuff over by Lamb's Donuts where we had a, such a runoff issue there, so that'll stabilize that bank, and, uh, that's all I have for an update.
How much longer on that?
Um, I would say probably another week or, or so, they should have, as soon as the, the disinfection and we get two good samples in a row, then we'll start doing tie-overs where, where, um, all the existing customers, it's on the old line, get tied over to the new line, and then we'll, uh, decommission the, the old water main that's out there.
Did I, I asked you last time, I think, about that tree where the dog park's gonna be, and you said some, some of you had hired somebody to cut it down, or somebody was gonna come and, they didn't do it, so you guys were gonna cut it down yourself, any update on when that's gonna be cut out?
I think we, it's pushed down.
It's pushed down, but when's it gonna be cut out, taken away?
And, um, we had some employees that was actually gonna cut it up, haven't heard from them, so I think we're gonna cut it up in, in manageable pieces and probably take it across the road.
Cause I was wondering then, cause I heard the mayor say something about when you're gonna get the fence up, you can't put the fence up until that tree's gone.
No, and I have not heard anything from the fence people, um, I know they got everything on order, we've done a few things there, we have a few more things to install, and then the, of course, the fence.
And when we get the fence up, do we have the signs and everything ordered that need to be installed on the fence before we can open it?
Yeah, I've got, um, I think just one sign that goes inside, um, the dog park, I don't, I don't know if there's any other signs that go around the fence, haven't heard anything. You want any other signs?
We can't do anything until that tree's gone.
Yeah.
So...
They wanna use the...
Every day I come by thinking it's gonna be gone, it's gonna be gone, and it's still there.
Might, we just take a couple of weekends.
Can we loan Linda a chainsaw?
Yeah, she, she, she don't like cutting them down.
I don't like cutting trees, although that one I would make an, make an exception for, I feel sorry for it.
Just one, oh, go ahead, Reggie.
Uh, one, bring up, at the intersection of J. H. Williamson and, uh, VFW Memorial Boulevard, right there by, uh, Subway, when you're coming up, um, VFW Memorial, at that stop sign there, you, yeah, it's very difficult to, for anybody to tell what's coming from the left, this, the C-cut traffic coming from left, cause you got two big real estate signs sitting right there.
And is that, so you're coming from, I'll get with you after the meeting and find out the particulars.
Yeah, you, it's two very big real estate signs somebody put, put there.
Okay.
You see, he, he raised a hand, he like, you know, which one I'm talking about.
Okay, we'll check that.
Line of sight or side distance almost. Um, real quick, I'm, uh, have you heard back from Mowed Out on the paint striping ideas?
Oh, yes.
No, and I know they, they've painted, they already, I mean, that's fresh paint, so they're probably not gonna redo it right now, but...
It's getting to that time of year, though, I mean, it's gonna get, you know, was it getting dark sooner?
Yeah.
See, they re-striped everything through the whole...
Yeah, I'm just saying, though, you know, on the white, you know, that concrete's so bleached out color-wise, that the white...
It's very close.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else for Steve? Thanks, Steve. Uh, Don?
It's been a while since I've seen you guys, I've been so busy. We finally put cameras in at the community center, uh, we did that reactively after someone came and stole our goals. I would like to contact Alarm Co and get a bid on Shasta, because we have a lot of stuff at Shasta, and we have more cameras there, so I would like to be proactive instead of reactive, waiting for someone to come and steal something there, and put cameras in now.
I would tell you, the mayor would say, go ahead and get the estimate, so go ahead and find out what's gonna cost him, and see what we do.
And, uh, I have a new intern who's, uh, for about two months, he's getting out of the Army and plans on going into IT.
Cool.
He's part of the, uh, before you get out of the military, you can volunteer somewhere and...
What's the name of that, Michael, career skills program?
June John.
Say the name again?
June John.
J-U-N-G?
J-O-N.
J-O-N.
Okay.
Anything else?
June sounds just fine.
Thanks, Don, Jay? Oh, did you have something?
No, no, sorry.
Hi, Jay.
The tonnage for September was three thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty-four tons, um, we're averaging right under two-hundred tons a day, um, the last week, uh, we've, uh, started getting a construction, or actually demolition job from Fort Leonard Wood, that's bringing us about sixty tons a day, we've had to hold them down to that much, cause we weren't able to get rid of it anymore than that, last Monday, we did two-hundred-and-ninety-one tons on that one day, um, the, uh, we borrowed a trailer from central Missouri to help with the overflow, and, um, uh, the other thing, the fall cleanup is tomorrow for St. Robert, and Wednesday for Waynesville.
That's what I was gonna say.
I was gonna ask, too, it came up pretty quick.
And, um, I wanna remind everyone that we will be closed, the transfer station will be closed on the fourteenth of October for Columbus Day, um, cause we, we worked on the fifth of July, uh, when the city was off, so... And that's all I have right now, does you have anything for me?
Anything? Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, Jay.
Mr. Ty Smith?
Thank you all.
Which are important, yes.
The, we've got some information on the FERC settlement on no gas on our rebate, um, there was a question to Cuba, Cuba has a gas consultant who seemed to think we were gonna get a cash settlement, that wasn't my thought, uh, because I kinda remembered the credit that we were supposed to get, so they approved the settlement of FERC at nine, on nine-twenty effective September one. The settlement says that we will get an invoice for credit on our, over each payment that we paid, plus five-point-five percent interest, so, uh, the last number I knew was a hundred and forty, so it's probably gone up quite a bit from there, uh, so what we'll get is an invoice, uh, with our credit on our bill, which you guys can think, think about, but that gives us some time not to have to pass through big bills to our, our customers, so we're gonna have a hundred and forty-plus thousand dollar invoice credit on our payments to them, so that will be useful to us, we should have that invoice sometime early October, and so, uh, that, that has been very successful after a long fight, so, um, how everybody else deals with it, don't really care, but, you know, we're gonna have a credit for a hundred, and we're gonna earn it as long as that credit's out there before it's applied, we earn five-point-five, so that's, uh, that's a pretty good result after a long fight.
Yes, thank you. All right, Anita?
I just have a few things for tonight, um, Missouri Avenue and Lightning Project, I know God approved our Myers Electric bid, so, um, contracts are being, fire sets have to be drawn up, and they're working on all of that, um, our barbecue committee, which is part of us being, uh, Kansas City Barbecue Society for our sanctioned event, is we have to attend to barbecue cook-offs and volunteer our time, so I did Lori, so the next one coming up for me is in Lebanon, and that's on Friday and Saturday, so Jean, Amy and I, I think Mike is going, a couple of the, uh, committee members are gonna go to meet our requirement for that KCBS, so I'll be working this weekend, Halloween in the Park is October the twenty-fifth, we're on target, and they actually have a committee meeting with John tomorrow at ten o'clock at the pool, if anybody would like to stop by, Halloween in the Park, like Linda said, uh, meets tomorrow at nine-thirty, and that event is on December the first. Glow-in-the-dark golf tournament we had this past weekend, um, had a decent turnout, and those funds went to shop with a cop, Kevin Hillman does that event, he's part of the park committee, also wanted to let everyone know we're giving swimming lessons at the, uh, pool, and we were remiss at the last meeting, um, we didn't tell you that Edna and I became certified municipal appointed officials, um, into a conference, so, uh, John and Michael are, um, Dr. Slider was, Reggie and Mr. Reese, so we have to get, um, do their certification for elected officials, so, um, we have that done, we're excited about that.
Did you say Dr. Slider did?
Uh-huh, he sure was, he was certified, he was the first one in the council that got certified.
That's right, oh, it's about two years ago.
Right. So, um, I attended the Missouri Public Utility Alliance meeting last week, we discussed industry changes, part of them was on the internet, and, um, they also had a medical marijuana and employees portion that I attended, I'm gonna give that to Ty's, I don't think he needs it, but I'm not giving that.
I did a set to our seminar.
Mid-Missouri Power and Energy Pool, we'll have a meeting here October the eighteenth at nine-thirty or ten, part of our contracts are up on our electric, so, um, our bids in, and we'll discuss that, um, here on the eighteenth. MML Central District Meeting will be here on November the sixth, and that meeting's at six o'clock, we'll meet at the community center, um, we have the last one in Lebanon, so the whole council was invited to attend that, they bring in a speaker for the meeting, so...
What day did you say?
November sixth. Um, November the sixth. What time meeting? MML will provide dinner, um, that night.
What time did you say?
Six.
At six, November sixth at six.
MRPC Annual Conference is at Stone Brook in Waynesville, October the twenty-fourth, if you all would like to attend, let me know by the fifteenth, I'll send a copy or email you a copy of the invitation tomorrow, um, this is, they're in one of their big anniversaries, I don't remember, it ought to be finish year, uh, fifth year anniversary, so, it ought to be a nice meeting. Growth Alliance had a meeting, uh, this month, um, they're revamping their website, we're Growth Alliance had a meeting, uh, this month, um, they're revamping their website, we're working on that, and they discussed having a brochure done that we could hand out to people who want, or businesses that want to locate in, um, the county, so it would just be something small and simple, two or 10 reasons why we would be, um, the best fit instead of going somewhere else, so we discussed that. Citi USA had a meeting here today at 1:00, um, the mayor chairs that committee, but he wasn't here, we discussed, um, moving forward. They're on target with, um, this is the committee that we, uh, contract with American Water with, they're on target for, uh, their Cammering, Cammering, um, they've done 1,200 linear foot, and they do like hydrant testing, and they met those numbers already, and they haul sludge and do some other things, and they're on target, so everybody was happy with that. Carrie was at the meeting, they had a few things to do administratively. The airport board, um, met, and their employments were 653 for the month, and declamates were 257. Fuel sales were up, they were, um, up last month, they were 4,641.5, and this month they were 6,172.60, so that's a new reset, we're happy about that. We had two annexations come in this week, one is on Legend, and that will complete the Legend Street. Everybody on that road will be in the city after we do that, when it comes to council. Um, other than that, I think we have some closed session.
And Anita is, should get a little bow, she was successful with a very nice, uh, grant for MRPC, and that's, it's very good for us, too. Tell us about that, you did real well for them.
Um, we met, Ozark River Solid Waste District met today, and I had written a grant for us to, um, move our recycling bins up the hill to the asphalt, and we'll start over that with signage, so people don't have to carry their recyclables down the hill, and then we would add, uh, recycled bins to the parks, um, for people to put their plastic bottles, and one of them, and then in the pool, we've never had a recycling bin, which we ought to, because theirs is all plastic, and, uh, so that's green, uh, the big recycling bins, and then 500 small bins, um, we've got, we'll get funded for that, and then for some brochures and some marketing items, and this is all pen, uh, pending, uh, DNR's approval, but, uh, Ozark Rivers did approve us as one of the grant recipients, so I was happy about that.
Good job. Anything else?
Good job, Anita.
All right, next, Board of Aldermen meeting, November 5th, is that right?
Uh, November.
November 5th.
That's what this says, but.
No, we're not having one October 15th.
That's what some, that's what they say.
Yeah, no more in October?
Yeah.
We're not having another meeting in October.
We originally were supposed to be on, for.
That's right.
On a day, and we treat a holiday, and so we said our, whenever we said, I'm like, the beginning of the year, um, November 5th would be our next one, I'm sure if we need a meeting, we'll call it.
Right. All right, anything else? Okay, meeting's being closed pursuant to Missouri Law Chapter 610.021, should include Section 2 Real Estate. We get a motion to go into close.
Motion.
Motion by Linda, second by Reggie, call the roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.